Next item is item 10.7, and it's about the adoption, the first reading.
10.6.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to get that. That's all right. We appreciate your enthusiasm.
Okay, yes, item 10.6, that's the update to the Local Control Accountability Plan, first reading.
Absolutely. Dr. Kell is with us tonight. Dr. Kell, we appreciate all of your hard work on this, and I can assure the board that if you were to look at Dr. Kell any time within the last several weeks, it's like looking at Dora. They're both got their noses to the grindstone, and they are working their tails off. So, thank you, Dr. Kell, for all your work on this.
So, today I'm going to update you on the progress that the district made during this school year with regards to, vis a vis our ELCAP, our Local Control Accountability Plan, and also share some of the actions that we are proposing for the next year. And actually, it's a three-year plan. So, we're planning very seriously for the next year, but then we are projecting also second and third. But it's a living document, evolving document. Okay, so, the Local Control Accountability Plan has Emeryville School District, so Local Control Accountability Plan has three major goals. And then each goal has a number of outcomes, and each, and then the outcomes have actions that support those outcomes. Just, that's how it's structured, okay? And so, what I was thinking I will do, you have the whole document there. It's a huge document, as you can see. So, I want to share some of the outcomes from last year, just highlight some things, and feel free to ask questions if you need to. And then I wanted to share the actions going forward to support the goals. The goals did not change because they are major goals, okay? So, and I will be taking notes if you give any suggestions. Okay, so, the first outcome, the first goal is that all students will be provided with equitable access to educational opportunities and programs for economic, political, and social empowerment, and that all students will learn and demonstrate 21st century skills, including collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity to be college and career ready. So, that's the first major goal. And so, what you see on the screen right now, on the left side, it's expected outcomes, and on the right side, the actual estimated actuals. And so, the district expected to have 100% of teachers who are appropriately assigned to their positions, and we did in the beginning of the year. However, one of the teachers resigned a couple of months in the beginning of the year, and we were not able to fill that position for the whole year. We just found a very good candidate, I understand, for next year. It was a social studies teacher. So, we had a substitute, actually several long-term substitutes there. And so, that's why we have this number. At NIAIDS, we only had 98% of teachers who were fully credentialed and assigned appropriately. At the high school side, we did have 100%. The second one was in compliance with Williams' report that our students have access to all the Common Core materials and that we will inquire in an ongoing basis into materials effectiveness. And so, that goal is achieved. All students have access to Common Core materials. The third priority, the second priority is Common Course Standards Implementation. And as you can see, the third outcome is that 100% of certified staff will attend professional development based on current content and performance standards, such as Common Core, Next Generation Science Standards, English Learning Development Framework, and research-based best practices. And so, on the right side, you see not a comprehensive list, but just a representative list of the kinds of professional development that our teachers attended. Everybody was trained in Eureka Math last year. Unfortunately, there aren't any programs that are already aligned with Next Generation Science Standards, but we had Next Generation Science Standards Rollout Symposium. All science teachers attended that. All science teachers across the district attended Amplify Training, which was how to teach English learners effectively while teaching science. So, that was very exciting. ERWC is the program for writing primarily. Silicon Valley Math Initiative, some of the teachers attended. We had eight days, full days, of questioning and collaborative learning workshops that I personally conducted at NIAIDS. And another very exciting development was Instructional Rounds in Education, which is a really powerful and potent vehicle for instructional improvement. What came out of that first rollout symposium where our science teachers went, that we formed the first district-wide science committee, and they've been meeting every Monday after school and planning their programs together. And actually, the most exciting things for me was that one of the new science teachers at high school was volunteering his time modeling for the middle school teacher. So, that's really exciting. All right. I want to highlight this too. So, 100% of 10th and 12th graders will be provided project-based portfolio defense learning opportunities, and they were, was in collaboration with Envision Education. Now, the next one, 100% of teachers will be observed using integrated ELD strategies to serve English learners, was not entirely met. Only about 30% of teachers were consistently using those strategies. But even with that, our English learners made a really impressive progress, which I'm really excited to share on California English Language Development Test. So, but we need to work on that, and we need to expand the ranks of teachers who are using these strategies because they're good for everybody, not just for English learners. We're also working on developing ELD/ELA programs in middle grades and in high schools next year, and teachers volunteered to work in summer and develop those, which is really exciting. And we chose Reach for Reading. You may recall that this year TK through five grade teachers were piloting two ELA/ELD Common Core-aligned programs. And they, we had a very rigorous process where they presented to the whole body, the whole ILT Instruction Leadership Team, and they chose Reach for Reading, National Geographic Program, which will be implemented in TK V next year. So, next year, we will have both mathematics and English Language Art slash English Language Development Programs that are Common Core-aligned.
Dr. Kell, I'm sorry. Do the board members have this PDF yet, or is it up there on the table? Do we hand it out to them already? Do you know? Well, but your presentation, your file here, they have the plan, but do you know?
Oh, no, I didn't share the PowerPoint because it's the same thing, really.
Okay.
But I'm.
You're highlighting out of.
Yeah, I will send, yeah, I will send the PowerPoint if you want it, but it goes completely along with the plan. So, if you look at the goal number one, priority number four, and you can see it in the plan. And I apologize, it's an unwieldy, huge document. All right.
That's actually, sorry, I apologize. That's why I wanted to see your beautiful presentation, because it summarizes.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Another very exciting development was, so, in, at the end of the year, our half-time ELD teacher in high school resigned. And we decided to hire a full-time instead of half-time ELD teacher so that this person can support middle school students as well as high school students. And we were very fortunate to find a great candidate because, of course, our chances were much better with full-time position. And so, now, all of our students get integrated and designated English Development classes in high school, middle school, and in elementary school. So, there are two professionals that are working with these groups of students. Okay, the next one that I wanted to highlight was that we were talking about last year that 100% of students who are struggling academically, either as indicated by their grade of C or lower, or through ongoing progress monitoring of students, will have access to new tutoring program. And we really expanded tutoring program at NIAIDS this year. We chose to hire teachers who know the students instead of outsourcing it, even though it's more expensive. And we purchased some very good programs, intervention programs. So, that was a good development. Then, another thing I would like to highlight is, so, number 16 said, 100% of high school students will fulfill A through G requirements through a clearly articulated four-year academic schedule. That was a very unrealistic goal, unfortunately. I wish it could be met so easily, but it's not an easy goal. And I was talking to the counselors, and I was looking at data, and only 30% of students were actually eligible even to complete the A through G courses. So, we're hoping that next year, it will be 30% who complete it, and hopefully, by 2020, we will have 65%. But if we will overachieve this goal, it'll be even better soon. That's what that is. I mentioned before that our English learners made a really, really impressive progress. And so, if you look at number 17, unselled, we wanted 5% increase, and we actually had 15.6% increase. Now, all this data, this data is actually 15-16. A lot of the data that I'm presenting today, I have to share, is a little outdated because on California school dashboard, the data, aside from academic indicators, everything is 14-15. This is our local data that I already have. We have to wait for certified data to present, but based on this, we made a really, really impressive progress with EL students. Okay, and then, again, state target, if you look at number 18, it's related, was 54.7% for students who are in the country for five years or longer, and they actually jumped to 73%. So, that's nice. Okay, number 22, if you look at, we said that 100% of all ninth graders will be enrolled in science, and we were able to achieve that goal by hiring the second science teacher. And so, all ninth graders are enrolled in science now. Number 23, the district will hire another full-time science teacher, which we did, and that's the teacher who was volunteering his time too. So, it was a good hire. I would like to highlight number 25 now. It says 100% of Emory English Learner students will have access to, in all classes, to integrated ELD strategies to enable all English learners to access core curriculum. And it's very challenging, especially for high school students who come from another country. You can tell by my accent, I'm very familiar with the issue. I didn't go to high school here. I came as an adult, but believe me, it's very hard. And so, they need a lot of support. And so, we achieved that goal. 100% of students are now supported because we have that additional full-time teacher, which is very helpful. Okay, now, goal number two. That was the first goal. The second goal deals with technology. Innovative technology will be integrated to facilitate global awareness, communication, collaborative learning, and critical thinking, those four Cs of 21st century. And so, if you look at number 29, it says provide access for 100% of students to Common Core-aligned ELA-balanced literacy curriculum that includes diverse primary texts and Common Core-aligned math. And so, what happened this year was that TK V students had that, but middle school and high school students didn't, but will next year because they're developing the program. And all students TK through 12 are now engaged in learning with Eureka, which is, Eureka Math is a Common Core-aligned program. It was expanded into high school this year. If you look at number 33, am I going too fast, or am I, okay? Okay, so, this is, this deals with student engagement, and it says over three years, 100% of EUSD students will have their own device to use in class or at home to increase the amount of time students are engaged, have access to Common Core, and desire to attend school more often. Well, everybody knows that kids of that age are digital natives, so, of course, it's a very attractive thing in addition to being a great tool. Our initiative is in progress right now. We have several classrooms that are model, piloting technology, I believe, three so far. They're all at NIAIDS because we figured that high school has a computer lab, but next year, we're hoping that everybody will get their device. And that's fifth grade and first grade classroom, and the library, I think, also has it. Number 34, 70% of EUSD parents and families will access the Student Information System, ILLUMinate. We're a little bit behind on that one. Only 26.67% of our high school parents so far access the system. And part of the reason is because we were not able to move as quickly as we would like with technology, and so, high school parents are just getting that access, I mean, middle and elementary school parents, so they obviously didn't access that data. Number 37 is 90% of students who have failing grades in A through G courses will have received, will receive a passing grade through engagement with an online class support. And that one is in progress. We are using Odysseyware, which is a digital program that allows teachers customize curriculum for the students. And those who failed a class are expected to either retake the whole class or work on Odysseyware, so that outcome is working out nicely. Okay, goal three now. Provide a comprehensive multi-use city school campus that fosters a respectful environment, engages students in an innovative education, and offers comprehensive resources to bring members of the Emeryville community together to interact and learn. So, I would like to highlight number 39. 100% of EUSD students will attend a multi-use school facility. Obviously, this facility is attended by 100% of our students. We also have a lot of new clubs, such as basketball teams, boys and girls, Girls on the Run Club, third through fifth grades, third through fifth grade students, Scientific Adventures for Girls, Science and Engineering for Boys, and many other activities. Number 40, school site councils, ELCAP parent and EL advisory committees and other parent groups will meet regularly during the school year, at least three times for which the purpose will be reflecting on and giving input on district process toward goals. And I think that a couple of you can attest to that because you visited us when we were meeting. And so, we had four meetings with the parent advisory committee. We had three meetings with ELAC, with the English Learner Advisory Committee. We had a meeting with the student committee from high school. We also, parents also met in school site councils on both sides. So, that one, that goal is achieved. ADA, I'm kind of glad that Dr. Rubio spoke about that because now I don't have to explain. There was a 3% decline. We were hoping to increase it by 2%, so that goal was not achieved. Number 45, there will be a 10% decrease in chronic absenteeism rates district-wide. And our decrease was by a little bit less than 10%. So, in 14-15, our chronic absenteeism was at 17.9%, and in 15-16, it was at 9.77%. So, we didn't quite reach the goal, but we're close. And this is for unduplicated students only, so, because ELCAP primarily focuses on unduplicated populations. So, if a student missed more than 18 days of school, which is 10%, you take all those students and divide by the amount of unduplicated students. That's how they come up with that formula, with that number. Okay, number 51, train 100% of Emory teachers in equity awareness and culturally relevant pedagogy. Very big subject for our district, as today was very evident. In both schools, the faculty engaged in those conversations. I believe there were equity meetings at NIAIDS every month, once a month, and I don't know how often at high school side, but there were equity meetings also in conversations. Some of our faculty attended training with Pacific Education Group, which is equity organization, and more of us will attend, more, more. Actually, all of us will attend in the beginning of the year, which is exciting. I just attended one very recently. It was interesting. Okay, now, actions for next year. So, what I would like to highlight, many actions are still the same because you don't achieve it right away, and it takes time. It's a process, right? But I would like to highlight some things that are new this year. So, we're adding an additional AP class, AP Calculus in high school, and we're also adding Computers, Science AP class in high school, which is very exciting. Okay, we will, we're increasing support of English language learners by finding full-time position, continuing to fund it. She only started in February. We will provide professional development for all teachers in Common Core practices in the context of Eureka Math for those teachers who didn't attend. Last year, everybody did, but we will have some new people, obviously. Reach for Reading, those who didn't pilot will need training. Teachers also decided to incorporate units of study by Lucy Culkins. Somebody mentioned that they used to use those before. It's a great, very powerful writing program. We also would like to try to pilot math trailblazers, also Common Core-aligned Integrated Math, Science, and Social Studies Program in two grades to see if I like it. Another thing that we'll be doing is we will provide training in the beginning of the new school year in differentiation, which is really important for us, universal design for learning approaches. And it's very important because it meets the needs of English learners and African-American students, which is our lowest-performing population. So, we need to really look at how we differentiate and how we meet the needs of students, all students. We will continue using instructional rounds as a mutual accountability and collaboration tool where teachers observe each other and analyze data together and then act on it. ELD coordinator and the ELD teacher will collaborate with sixth through 12th grade teachers to create an ELA/ELD curriculum this summer, and they all volunteered for many hours to work on that. And it'll be based on Common Core and on ELD standards, so it'll be integrated. Another thing I'd like to highlight is that we will provide those two high school AP classes that I mentioned before, Calculus AP and BC and Computer Science. We will provide targeted intervention for students struggling academically during the school day, but also in after-school tutoring, TK 12. And this may also include some preparation for students in SATs and ACTs. We'll also provide professional development for teachers in restorative practices and in strategies for teaching positive social skills and to employ alternatives to suspensions because one of the red flags that we have on our California School Accountability Board is that although our suspension rates are very low for the district, our special needs students are suspended more often than they should be. And so, we want to find alternatives, and we want to educate ourselves how we can handle it in a different way. And the last one is very exciting too. We are going to provide coding elective classes for middle school students. We have coding in high school, so now, our middle school students will be ready when they come to high school. And also, one of the things that we are doing this year, we applied for a grant with Stills, and this is an organization that brings technology professionals, business people, into schools, and they volunteer in the classrooms. And so, the whole year, somebody will be co-teaching, several actually, people will be co-teaching or volunteering in Mr. Burns' class, which is also exciting. And we are hiring a new technology coordinator because with all this new technology, we need to teach. It's not only about technical aspect, but it's also very important. And our parents and our teachers spoke about it very passionately, that we need somebody who will support teachers in ways to integrate technology, to enhance instruction, not just technically, how do I use spreadsheet? That's important too, of course. That's foundational. But it's very important to make instruction better with technology. Okay, goal two. We'll provide computer devices for all students. It's a three-year initiative. We're hoping that next year, we will provide already devices for all students, and we'll hire this technology coordinator slash coding instructor. We'll continue to fund new Spanish-speaking bilingual parent outreach coordinator who is working with not only Spanish-speaking parents, but primarily with them. We will also provide structured play support by hiring playworks to ensure greater engagement during recess and prevent bullying. And that also affects unduplicated populations specifically, in addition to everybody, of course. And then, the last development, we are instituting small school model at NIAIDS. We are creating two autonomous middle and elementary schools. We're hiring two principals, and there is a huge body of research in favor of small school model because it develops personal relationships between adults and students and increases engagement, and consequently, obviously, increases and raises achievement. And that's all I have.
Dr. Kell, I'm sorry. Can you go back to that previous page? I just want to point out, so those last two items you mentioned, playworks coming in, or maybe, well, it was that, and there was a previous one regarding the technology.
One more?
Okay, yeah, that one, playworks and the technology, support the teachers. I just want to point out to the board, that was one you heard from teachers, and we were really listening to get that into the plan, and some parents, I recall, too. So, it's important for the board to know that we took input multiple times, and we were listening, and I was happy that, it was one of the teachers, Ms. Fox, actually, I think, at first grade, who really said, you know, we need more structured recess on our playgrounds. And she really led the impetus to coordinate some meetings with playworks and myself and really get the ground, get the ball rolling on that, so.
Yeah, because it teaches students social skills, which is very important for school climate, right? Students who behave during recess, they are more likely to behave during the school day. So, that's an important initiative. And yes, many, many teachers, they didn't name necessarily playworks, but they were talking about structured playtime.
Thank you, Dr. Kell.
Okay, at this time, any questions for regarding this topic?
Could you go back to the past slide? There was item number 46. Yeah, something about middle school dropout.
Oh, you're talking about this year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, middle school dropout, yes. It's 2%, and again, I don't have the data for this year yet because it's not certifiable yet.
Maybe Superintendent Rubio, what is middle school dropout?
Same thing.
Let me see, 46, I suspect, Member Inge, that the state has a calculation that they use. I'm trying to recall the details on this. I'm trying to recall if I, the details on this. You can help me, you know this, because the dropout, they record the student coming in one year, and then three years later, or for high school, four years later, the state cannot track where that student has landed. So the other schools, so let's say ninth grader, a good example is ninth grade, usually it's more common. If a child comes here in ninth grade and then stops coming in tenth or eleventh grade, the, the next school district should make a record on their student information system with the state that the child now, their ID, they're here, right? Let's say they go up north to Sacramento. If that child never lands in another district, when the, when the Calpads people run their, their check every spring, that they, they don't know what happened to it. Now, it could be that the child landed at times maybe in a group home or someplace else, but there still should be some record of it. So they're considered a dropout if the state can't determine where the child has landed.
So pretty much it comes, when it comes to attendance and how they consider a child dropping out, and we know middle schoolers are more likely to drop out, but because they haven't been disenrolled, so if they're not disenrolled properly, the school has to carry them on the attendance, and it looks like they're not showing up. And that's how they consider them a dropout from their previous district because they haven't been disenrolled.
Thank you for sharing that.
Or properly disenrolled.
Thank you. Well, by the way, this, for whatever it's worth, this figure is not even available on the state side because we're so, it's so, so small, you know, the number of kids is so small. It's our local data, actually, from illuminate. I really had to dig for that one.
When will the two thousand sixteen-seventeen data be certified?
Depends on what data. So a lot of it will be certified in, in the fall of two thousand seventeen, most of it actually will be. Some of it will be maybe a little bit earlier, depends on what it is. Because state has now like nine different indicators, some are local, some are state. And that dashboards were moving to a different reporting system. Actually, we've moved already, although it is in a piloting stage. And some of the data, even on that, is outdated. For instance, it shows that we didn't do well with graduation rates. Well, I looked at Data Quest, which is, which has fifteen, sixteen data, and we actually did a very, we made a very nice progress. So I was like, yes, otherwise, we would have been eligible for technical assistance, but we're not. So they have that agreed, I, I don't know, I don't think you attended my presentation about the dashboard?
I've, I've attended Alameda County-wide presentation, so I'm familiar with it.
Oh, you weren't on the phone, that's right.
And I was on the phone for your presentation.
Right, right, now I remember. Yes, so, so we are kind of in, in orange, but really, we will be in green after that data is available.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah. Our high school principal is working very hard on that, literally, with individual students, very commendable.
I had a question for, for John. John, something like evaluating, something like evaluating curriculum enrichment programs. When I was able to attend, I think that the last LCAP session, I noticed that parents wanted, there was some, there was a lot of consensus around providing challenging curriculum for, for kids. And I thought about our discussion around how do we, how do we look and how do we evaluate programs? How does that fit with what we're seeing right now in this, in this LCAP? I see that we're going to increase the number of AP courses, but I think there may be, I think I, I heard appetite for having, ensuring and making more things available beyond a, beyond just one additional AP course. So how does, how does evaluating other programs fit into this?
In terms of the, the rigor or quality of the program, is that what you're asking about? Or additional programming outside of the traditional subject matter? Because you might, because those parents that night were also talking about other types of classes, type, English, English for parents, or I think some of the parents brought up, actually, culinary, was it cooking? Is that what you're referring to, or?
I mean specifically, you know, you know the program that I have in mind.
Oh, oh, sorry.
And so.
You're talking, you're talking about sort of rigor of, of the program and the rigor of the courses.
Right, yeah, absolutely. And, and providing more challenging alternatives in terms of curriculum for, for our, for our kids. So does the evaluation of that has to be part of LCAP? Can that occur?
It can occur separately and independently. It used to be that the state of California required us to only adopt curricular materials off of their list, like they would say, here are ten publishers, we've okayed. School districts, every seven years, you've got to buy one of these. So they kind of threw that to the side about two, about four years ago now. And so a good example is what Dr. Kell did recently. Independent of the LCAP, she had a group of teachers who worked together as a team, giving her lots of feedback and input, piloting different materials. But to answer your question, yes, it doesn't have to be spelled out in this document. It's something that we can initiate at any time we choose.
Okay, great, thank you.
I do have a question pertaining to, I know I've seen some good progress in certain aspects, and then there's not progress in others. How do you perceive a plan of action to implement the, or to take care of the deficiencies? I mean, this is kind of a broad question, but I'd just like to get your overall approach to seeing a problem and your problem-solving approach to the issue.
So I think we need to approach it more systematically. And now that we will have new administration, I'm hoping to work very closely with the new administration and with the high, continue working with high school principal. So one of the ways we were looking at it this year, and we just began, we're looking at cognitive complexity during our instructional rounds. Because you can read a book, but the book may not be very rigorous or intellectually stimulating, right? Or you may ask a question, whether it's yes or no. And so it doesn't, it doesn't require anybody to think. So we started this conversation about how do we teach kids to think? And what is cognitive complexity? And how do you even measure it? So at NIAIDS, I know this became very, they became very worst, they, it became very conversant in that conversation, but it doesn't happen. Once you have it here, it does not necessarily translate into practice immediately. So it's a process, right? It's a learning process. So that's one of the things. Another very important thing, we need to very systematically collect data. And we started part of this work this year, too, with interim assessments. But I'm hoping next year, we'll have actual calendar of assessments and data collection and data analysis. And we will find the right amount of data, because there is such thing as too much data that overwhelms you, right? But, but we need to look at data, look at parents, and, and figure out what are the needs and how we might approach problem-solving then. So that's another thing. And, and another important part is professional learning, of course, right? And so it shouldn't be just drive-by. It has to be very systemic, it has to be based on needs, and it has to be planned for the whole year. So this was my first year, and I didn't even start at the very beginning of the year. So I'm hoping that next year, I'll be more of service. I provided some professional development this year myself, and I'm hoping to do more of that, too. And, and invite good people in or send people to good training. And then during the rounds, find something really high leverage and look for it.
Yeah, and I think Dr. Kell, Dr. Kell and I have discussed the other piece with two new administrators coming in. One thing we want to make sure, the structure, and she wants to make sure the structure is that there is a, a clear schedule for all the teachers regarding when they teach the Common Core Math curriculum, or when the K eight, or when they teach their language arts curriculum, and even the social emotional curriculum. Because we have noticed, and Dr. Kell's noticed, it's not always happening, there isn't always a high level of integrity, unfortunately, among some staff regarding making sure they're using the curriculum we've adopted, or we're using, or we're piloting. And if people aren't using the curriculum and they're just sort of putting together their own materials, or the principal isn't checking regularly in the classrooms, then we can't, we can't be sure that we're going to see good results in the test scores. So that's a concern of ours, I think, based on what we've seen this year. We want to make sure that Dr. Kell and the principals are, Dr. Kell's supporting and working with the principals to make sure they're getting in the classrooms and they're, they're monitoring that the curriculum is being implemented. Is that kind of a fair summation?
Yeah, and, and you know how we talk about equity? To me, equity is first and foremost in expectations. But expectations don't teach kids, right? Expectations need to be supported by high level of support. So finding that balance of high expectations accompanied by high, high levels of support, if we will find that formula for the district, I think we'll be very successful. But it's a process, it takes time. I worked in Chicago Public Schools for many years, and I saw great results, but it takes time. Nothing happens over time with human data, you know?
Just one other question pertaining to, you're in a unique position, you're a very small school district. Have you been collaborating with outside entities, other districts, in order to get kind of a feel? Because this is new to all of us because it's a new metric. And how have you been able to put your head around this, this, this approach?
Well, you know, I, as, as one-person department, which is a new thing to me, too. I go to all the, all the meetings, or most of the meetings at Alameda County Office of Education, and I was fortunate to meet a lot of my colleagues there. And with, like, with, what really struck me was California Dashboard, for instance, that even the most advanced districts had something that would qualify them for technical assistance, and that something was usually special education. So we all need to work on that, for sure, right? But, yeah, we talk to each other and we try to, to collaborate. Of course, they have different means. They have a department working for them, as, you know, I have to do procurement, too, for, for my teachers. So it's complex, but it's also gratifying because you can go and see the results in the classrooms. So I don't know if I answered your question. There aren't many small districts like this one, so.
I'm just thinking as far as tools that are available, and it's kind of, not, not you'd really think of a tool, but it is, it is a way to sound, you know, sounding board as far as to ideas, and it just, I just, it's more of a process and how you're dealing with your, your environment.
So, so we have listservs, and we are sharing ideas on that. And when we have questions, we ask each other's question, each other's questions, so that helps. The staff from Alameda County is very helpful and very forthcoming and ready to help, so that's, that's great. You know, but I'm learning my ropes because I've never worked in a small district like this, honestly, you know? I've worked with six hundred schools in this, too, so.
All right. Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, a follow-up. What, what do we believe are the areas in which we have the biggest gaps? Maybe, you know, top two or top three, but which, which areas do we consider gaps? Yeah.
Do you want to know what we believe or what the California Dashboard is showing? Or both?
Both.
All right. So on California Dashboard, we don't look too bad, actually. Because what they're looking, and that's a new development, which is awesome. They're looking at progress over time, they're not looking at attainment. Because it's not fair, right? It depends on where you start. So they have this colored chart, right? And you, they're looking at achievement versus, in one year versus progress over time from last year to this year, right? For the most part. And it's like two variables in a graph. So in that respect, we had only two areas of concern. One was our suspension of special education kids, which is still a problem, and we need to do something about it. The other one was graduation rate, but it's not a problem, apparently. Now, I, I don't want to speak for everybody, I can speak for myself. I think we need to improve our academics. We need to be very consistent in how we, how we approach professional learning, because you can, I, I, I believe in reciprocity of accountability, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you expect somebody to perform, you have to provide support. And we've been providing support all year, but it was not as systemic as I would like it to be. So Dr. Rubio is very responsive, but I need to get my act together, too, and, and talk to teachers more and talk to the new administrators. Look at data.
Appreciate it. John, I'd love to get your thoughts on, on where you think the, the biggest gaps are that we need to focus on.
Last year, or last summer, I asked the, both principals to really focus the staffs on, each staff, on our vision of collaborative learning, because I think it's where powerful learning occurs, where students are grappling together, and you throw out a question to them, and they've really got to, it's a little beyond their reach, but they can, they can figure it out, or they, they need a little support. I think what we have to do is continue to emphasize with all the administrators and the new ones as well, is monitoring that, making sure it's happening. So, so defining it for the principals, defining it for the teachers, it's, it's really part of our vision and direction. It's the only overlapping area of the new Common Core, the National Science, NGSS science standards, and the new ELD standards. And so I think it can be powerful, but it's more than two students just, you know, sharing their ideas. If you're talking about collaborative learning, the way I define it, it means that kids are struggling, coming up with their own answers that might not be right, and providing evidence for what they come up with in their opinion. So I think the instructional rounds work this year was a really great start, but I'm not certain that we've done a good enough job overall, myself or the administrators, at focusing the teachers on that piece of the vision that I was really hoping, you know, every superintendent hopes that the focus makes it to the classroom. I think we're gonna, Dr. Kell and I are gonna really push this harder with the administrators that, that, that piece of collaborative learning makes it to the classroom in terms of what the teachers are trying to do, what they have professional development and support to do, and that they understand it. So that would be my, my two cents.
Any other clarifying questions for the, Ms. Crowe? At this time, then, public comment? Okay, no public comment, so final questions from the board?
I would just like to ask, just to reiterate, if we could have your presentation, that you wouldn't mind sending us your, the deck, we really appreciate that.
I'll be happy to. Through Lisa, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Any others?
Just, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Kell. It looks, this is a massive document, it looks like it took a lot of effort to put it together, and thank you for that.
And honestly, if you have any suggestions, you know, my email, I, I mean, we're still working on it until the twenty-eighth.
Got it, great, thank you.
I'm saying, we're still, yeah, working on it. So, I mean, I have a lot of input from different stakeholders. I would love to have feedback from you guys, too, so we can incorporate it into the program.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
And as I understand it, this is for information only?
This is information only. The LCAP process requires it comes back two times.
All right, all right, thank you.